Yes.
I had, um, I had discussed with Marilyn at our last meeting that when we do our moment of silence, that we would recognize people from the district who've lost loved ones or, or staff members who've lost, lost loved ones. And we had, um, a couple of emails this past week from Debbie Costello with regards to that. Um, and I, I didn't have that discussion with you, but she was gonna do it at the next possible time. So I, I would just like to, you know, have a, if I could, um, have a moment of silence for the staff members who've lost loved ones. Thank you.
In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, a public notice of this meeting has been sent to board members of district schools. The Herald News attests the record Aim West Milford, the Messenger, West Milford Town Hall, County Superintendent's Office, Board Attorney, Cable Vision of Warwick, and posted in the Administration Building, copies of the Board Meeting Calendar Resolution were provided to all local media, Town Hall, Township Library, and all district schools. I'm gonna take a roll call. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Here.
Mr. Dever? Mr. Drew?
Here.
Mr. Foodie?
Rose.
Mrs. Keppe?
Here.
Ms. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs., Mr. Robbins?
Here.
Mrs. Schultz. Okay, um, Mr. Dever and Mrs. Schultz are not here tonight, so I need, um, a motion from the floor for someone to become the presiding officer for this meeting. Mr. Bailey?
I move that, um, Inga be the presiding officer this evening, based on her previous experience in that chair.
I'll second that.
Uh, any other names from the floor? Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Keppe?
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. Let's see, we are going in executive session. Um, I need a motion to go into, Mrs. O'Brien, please.
I make a motion to approve the following resolution. We saw that the board go into executive session 9:00 PM for approximately nine minutes with the purpose of conducting a student hearing, discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel, PIBs, agreements, the Director of Education search, and matters of attorney-client privilege. The executive session minutes will not be released until such con as a privilege or confidentiality is no longer applicable.
Second, I think.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Babbitt. Super, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A little rusty. opposed? Superintendent's report, Mr. Ashita.
All right, so it's been a busy month, uh, month of May. We've had, uh, over at the high school, accreditation for growth, which is part of Middle States, actually came in and, uh, spent three days reviewing programs, interviewing students and parents and staff members. Um, the, the bottom line is that, uh, we have met the criteria on the Middle States. They will be giving us a full report, probably within the next month, a full written report. Uh, the verbal report that they give at the end is kind of general, uh, states some of the areas of concerns. And basically at the high school, one of the areas of concern, um, actually was with the building itself. They, they walked into the auditorium and because of the situation we have with the roof, there are one section of the auditorium that is, uh, blocked off with yellow tape. Looks like a crime scene, unfortunately. Uh, but that is for safety's sake, so that is one of the things we're trying to fix, is get that roof fixed. They were very happy with many of the programs that, uh, we have. They met with some of the board members, myself, Ms. Francisco, and, uh, again, we looked at the AP courses that are offered, the programs we offer for special education, and everybody else in between. So, uh, fortunately, that went very well. And I will have, once that report comes back, I would like to invite Mr. Matlos back here, since he was the head of the committee, uh, to report on that. Uh, moving on, uh, we had our unannounced visit from the state of, uh, New Jersey, um, that would be under the, um, Safety Committee. Uh, it's very, very important. And what they did was they actually came to my office. We sat there for a while. I think in total with our local police department, we were, there was 11 of us as a team. And, uh, we went through some of our standards. I shared our manual with them, so they could see the protocol that we have in place. From there, we did move to the high school as the first place to visit. We did the active shooter lockdown drill, um, which was a surprise to everybody. And, uh, they are monitoring and took notes based on various things that they see. The overall protocol itself was excellent. Um, and what we did with the drills, everything was fine. Again, they're here to help, as they said, when I hear the critique or truly monitor, we're here to help to see where the weaknesses are, so they will come up with a full report. Once the drill was completed, they actually spent another hour sitting down debriefing with, uh, multiple, multiple people, including staff, uh, and teachers and anybody that was, uh, not in a classroom. They, they were able to sit down and speak to everybody and share what they saw and hear the concerns of the people in the building itself. From there, after we finished that, we moved over to Maple Road School at the elementary level. And again, um, they did a fine job. There are things that we need to tighten up. There are certain locations that need to be changed. And, and this is what this is all about. It's actually for them to come in and see that we have our signals prepared, ready. The students and staff know how to respond to these things and move quickly. So that was very, very important. So again, I'm looking for the, uh, full report to come back from them as well. Uh, and we also spent approximately 45 minutes to an hour debriefing at that school as well. Um, we have all the testing. Test, test, and more test. Uh, just to give you an update, NJ Ask, uh, May 27th, um, and then we have fourth and the eighth grade science, uh, coming up, the 26th to the 29th. Make-up testing will be the 28th and 29th. I am happy to report that all the, uh, park testing is now completed. Uh, and we have AP exams going on from May 4th until, uh, the 20th of this month, which is tomorrow. So the, all the AP exams will be over. Um, looking at programs and ceremonies, uh, last night at the high school, they did the distinguished scholars' awards programs, which was very, very nice. Uh, the top 15 students from each class was recognized for their accomplishments. Uh, each department supervisor did an excellent job presenting to one student from each one of those departments, uh, based on their outstanding work, whether it was something to do with music, whether it was something to do with history, right across the board. And that was very nice. Plus, there were some other recognitions from some colleges and other awards that, uh, Ms. Aronson, the guidance, uh, supervisor gave out as well. So it was a pleasant evening, good stuff. Uh, also yesterday, we had, uh, for the first time, I believe, there was a Memorial Day service at the high school. The entire student body came out to the parking lot. That was well organized. We had several members from the, uh, veterans come over. They sat there and joined in the, uh, ceremony. Several students from Student Council made speeches, some staff members made speeches as well. And it was, again, very successful. The students were very respectful, and we were happy that, that all worked there very nicely. And the final, uh, closing of the ceremonies with them actually bringing the wreath over to the flagpole, while we had our two trumpet players playing taps in the background. So it was very moving and very appropriate. Um, May 29th, we will be going, that's next Friday, some of us will be going down to Rider University to celebrate, uh, Upper Greenwood Lake School and McPeen School for being character education schools in the state of New Jersey. And I did put out a blast yesterday to recognize that McPeen is also a national school of, uh, character, which we are very proud of. Ms. Ryan Holt, congratulations, and everybody there. Uh, just a wonderful job, uh, very proud of all of them. So I believe that would be a ceremony next October in Georgia, Atlanta?
In Atlanta.
Okay, so, so there you go. So we have lots of things going on there. Um, also this week, tomorrow night, there is the Honor Society for Mathematics at the high school. Next week will be, uh, World Language Honor Society. And on Thursday, the 28th, will be National Honor Society at the high school as well. Um, I was fortunate enough to go to the Spring Conference for Superintendent's for a few days. Uh, I spent most of my time in programs dealing with school law tenure, uh, looking at various courses, dealing with testing, and also, uh, some components of character education and building better programs for all of us, uh, the rest of the schools. We certainly want to see them get on board, and I know everyone's trying, so, so that's good. So that's pretty much all I have right there for this time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashita. Special reports and correspondence, Mrs. Francisco.
The minutes from the April meetings, April 21st and April 28th, will be available at the next meeting on Tuesday, uh, the 26th, for your review and consideration.
Thank you. Any legal report?
Take this section.
Okay. President's report. I don't have anything to report at this time. Um, I do wish Marilyn well tonight. Um, she's having a met with her daughter who's graduating college, and I'm very proud of her, so I just would like to say that to her. Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner, for a period of 30 minutes, and then time permitting. Other petitioners and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the 30 minutes, uh, period transpires. Petitioners speaking during petitions and requests are asked to address topics listed in special action in the agenda. All speakers are asked to give their full names, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during petitions and requests. Is there anybody who'd like to speak?
Seeing that, move to close petitions and requests.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. Mrs. O'Brien?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented this evening.
Second.
Discussion.
Are we not supposed to have, and I was just looking, um, gonna look it up, aren't we supposed to have old business and new business even in a workshop meeting? And that's not printed on the agenda?
Usually is.
It usually is on the agenda.
It's usually, I, I'm pretty sure that it's...
Policies that's all painted.
Yeah.
Usually it's not on the agenda, so it's left off.
Everybody...
So, yeah, absolutely.
So you can amend, adopt the agenda as amended, or you can add it?
Okay, I'm pretty sure it's in here.
Okay, so we'll adopt the, um, agenda with amendments to, um, add new business and old business.
All right, I'll take, I'll take off the table, um, to adopt the agenda presented, and add amendment to add old and new business to the agenda.
You can do that, or we can just pass the motion as amended, as amended to include that.
But then we have to amend it.
No, well, not yet, because if we pass the, uh, agenda as amended, the resolution would be to change it to include those two items. And the board president gets to set the agenda as with, you know, in consultation with the superintendent. So I'm assuming there's consultation. Everybody's okay?
Everybody's okay. We want to do an old business on, right?
Okay.
So we'll leave it as it is. Okay.
And you may be right, but we'll check that. But I'm pretty sure it's always on, so maybe just lift off.
I think it's just left off, but it usually is.
That'll be it.
Only the president.
Okay.
All in other meetings?
It is in other meetings?
Okay.
Okay.
And so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay, education.
Uh, Mrs. O'Brien? Sure, I'll fill in for Mrs. Schultz. I'd like to make, uh, present to the board this evening the following four items for, to be voted on.
All right, discussion?
One, second?
Oh, second. Righty.
Can we separate item two, please?
Okay, so discussion?
On one, three, and four.
Any discussion on one, three, and four? Roll call.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, number two, discussion.
My understanding is...
Do you need a motion or a second?
Second.
Do you need a motion and a second?
Need a motion and a second.
Was taken out.
Oh, was taken, okay.
Will we make a motion to, um, approve the item to board's privilege?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, discussion.
My understanding is that with one of the Spanish textbooks, and I don't remember which one, maybe you do, that we are not buying enough of them for every student, and we're expected enough to share.
Can you talk through your microphone?
My understanding is that for one of the Spanish textbooks, I'm not sure which is one, you may recall, that we're not buying enough for every anticipated student. Instead, we're only buying enough for every other student. And, uh, that seems like a relatively low amount, and that makes it difficult to learn.
Wait, we're in the wrong area. We're, the number two that you polled is recommendation superintendent approve new self-entained preschool.
Okay, very sorry.
Okay, it's in the education section.
In the education section.
Oh, Mark.
Three.
Page three.
Page three.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
It happened.
And that's for, that will be, uh, as a discussion.
Right.
It's not being voted on.
Okay, so, any questions on number two?
Okay.
Mr. Babbitt? On number two. Uh, any questions on?
None.
Okay, I'm gonna call a roll.
Roll call.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Include education for the school, except we're going to...
Oh, oh, my God, no, we're not. Why are we the next one?
No, we have that for...
Executive session.
Okay, personnel and student affairs. Mrs. O'Brien?
Okay, now I know what I'm going off in about here. Okay, I have three items presented as she, uh, this evening to the board, or special action to be approved, apply to all boards.
One second.
A second? Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Okay, uh, budget and finance. Mr. Babbitt?
Mrs. O'Brien, watch this.
What?
Watch this.
Watch it.
I'd like to move items number one through four under budget and finance, please.
I can handle this, but I'll second that.
That's how you do that.
Okay.
Discussion. Um, Mr. Foodie?
I'd like to pull for a vote after we come out of executive session, to have the votes on number two and three after executive session, because I'm not quite sure what that's about.
Okay, yeah, that's fair.
That's, okay, we'll do that.
I'm sure we've talked about it, but I just wanna...
Refresh?
Refresh my memory.
No problem, we'll do that, so...
So it's just one and four?
So one and four.
Cause that, two and three should be in executive session at this point.
Okay, so then, again, we'll, um...
Well, two and three are just pulled to, uh, to the floor.
Okay.
A separate vote, but one and four is still up.
Okay, so any more discussion?
Uh, on number one, Barbara, who was the architect on the roof replacement project at Marshall Hill?
Uh, it's Sanabrino Associates.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Brien?
This is for one, five, four, three.
One and four only.
One and four, yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Foodie?
Yes.
Mrs. Keppe?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Okay, um, education. And Mr. Drew, since you're on the committee, why?
Now, these are to be moved at the next meeting. And all we're doing is discussing these. Now, do we discuss them all at once, or individually?
If you have questions on it, yes, you can bring it up as a discussion.
All right, then, I have some concern about item two. Um, and again, I don't remember which one, but one of the Spanish textbooks, we're only buying enough textbooks for half of the anticipated, the Spanish two.
The Spanish two.
So if we were to buy enough textbooks for all of the students, it would be $7,400 instead of $3,700?
Um, yeah, I believe that that was the...
Or, no, it'd be in addition to $14,700.
Fourteen, seven, right?
My own experience with learning languages, that having a book in hand is, is pretty difficult to learn without the book, even though much of the learning is person-to-person, not having a book, just makes it very difficult.
The discussion was on that one?
I do. Um, the discussion was, uh, Mrs., uh, Mrs. Ludwig came in to explain to everyone her selection of books. And as an outcome of that, she explained that with the budget being cut, that she had to cut back on the number of Spanish two books that she had, and that she would be bringing the next, um, part of that in the next school year. But there were people, uh, members of the board who wanted to have a discussion about, um, being able to cover all of the books, so each child would have a book in hand.
Mr. Bailey?
Clarification. We're talking about the course Spanish Two, correct?
Correct.
And the concern is that we're buying 160 of these at $88.50, correct?
Which is half of it, yes.
So actually, the area supervisor requested 320 books at $88.50, correct?
Correct.
Please talk into the mic.
What, you can't hear me? Thank you.
Please talk into the mic.
Young man, take those earphones off so you can hear me. I'll speak however I want. You can pick up my voice. It's never been a problem, Mr. Bailey. Don't talk to me that way. You ask me, please. Thank you. Now, I'll turn up the volume. It was like, oh, we really want 320 books?
That's how was the original request at the...
I don't think it was, because I only have 180 in the budget.
In the budget, so that's what she requested originally.
So she requested 180, and we're going next week to approve this item for 160.
160.
Correct?
That's what it says. It says 180.
Yeah, it says 180.
Correct? Well, importantly, it says of the 160 that we're buying, as opposed to the 180 due to budget cuts, hard copy and electronic version to each student. So that means we're getting 160 books and electronic version, correct?
Correct.
Okay, no further questions.
So for clarification, you're implying that we are gonna have the electronic versions, right? And you still won't be, will we be short?
I, I think we will be able to manage with this based on the fact that you have the electronic, you have electronic version is basically the, the disc form of the book, so the intent would probably be that if the books were going to go home at night for some reason, that some would have the textbooks and others would have to use it on their computers. So the information they would have would be the same.
Any other questions? Mr. Robbins?
Wouldn't the board have the ability to increase that number? For...
Well, the original request for the 15, 16 budget was reduced by $10,000 because of the reductions that needed to be accomplished. So we haven't even gotten to the July 1, 2015 budget yet. And the reduction is based upon, you know, what we felt could be trimmed from the budget. So could we increase the appropriation? We would have to wait until sometime this summer to see, um, if some of our, um, overhead costs come in a little lower than we anticipated. We have a little bit of flexibility that we could add a few thousand dollars to the textbooks for the Spanish program. But I think, um, tonight, it's a little premature to make that adjustment in a budget that hasn't even begun to, you know, although we're doing purchase orders now, we still don't really know where that's going. And we did cut it because of the, the tax levy, so...
I guess I'd like to suggest then, when we know actual enrollment, if it turns out to be more than this, I'm sure the book company will sell us additional copies of the books.
Mm-hmm.
I understand the point about the electronic version, except for the fact that, of course, we have students who don't have computers at all.
Well, whenever we would do something like that, uh, we would have to know if those students do have computers. So, uh, we actually poll staff, we poll parents and, and students to see if there are people without computers, because a lot of our notices are done by computer as well, so we, we kind of identify those people, uh, beforehand. And certainly, uh, some students, you know, some students actually like still having a textbook, so they would have the option, if that would be the case. But certainly, if, uh, based on the enrollments and looking at where we are financially, if we can pick up more textbooks, then we certainly would explore that. Okay?
So we'll defer perhaps ordering more until we have them. I know personally, even though I have a computer, if we're going to say, well, you have a computer, you don't get a book, um, that I learn better with a book in my hands.
And that's...
I don't wanna disadvantage the kids who have a computer.
Absolutely not. So, so let's look into it. Really what I'd like to get is a little bit more, uh, definition from, uh, the supervisor, uh, based on the, the enrollment, I think, what you mentioned, and seeing what the actual needs are, so...
We'll have that for the Friday.
Friday, yeah.
With also my understanding in the education meeting, that these books were not going to be, uh, needed until December. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
So we had time to figure out some ways to...
All right, so that's... Thank you. I'm sorry to take so much time over this, but...
Okay. Any other discussion on education? All right, budget and finance. Mr. Bailey?
The budget and finance at our next meeting, there will be 16 items for our review and a, and maybe a couple of handcories if we're lucky, correct? Since it's a busy time of the year and that.
Any discussion? Mr. Foodie?
I requested a copy of the Pomptonian Food Services contract. And Barbara, you said you were gonna hand it out, email it to the board?
I believe it's on the board member's webpage.
I'll look it up.
I, I S said it'd be posted to the webpage, so...
Okay.
I would have to check.
I thought we were gonna get a, all right.
Any other discussion on the budget and finance? Okay, let's move on to personnel. Mrs. O'Brien?
There are 29 items listed here that will be presented for anticipated approval at the Republican Party of May 26, 2015.
Any discussion? All right. Okay, um... Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner, for the period of 30 minutes.
at the regular meeting of May 26, 2015.
Any discussion? All right. Okay. Petitions and requests. Petitioners who have requested to speak prior to the meeting will be first with five minutes for each petitioner for the period of thirty minutes, and then, time permitting, other petitioners and requests limited to five minutes per petitioner will be allowed until the thirty-minute period transpires. All speakers are asked to give their full name, spell their last name, and provide their address. Speakers may not use the names of students during the petitions and requests. Would anybody like to speak?
Seeing that, move to close petitions and requests.
Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Okay, new business is adding new business.
Seeing that, move to close new business.
Old business.
Second?
Sorry.
Second?
All in favor? Do you oppose? Old business.
I would like to just inform everyone that the Cablethon was held this past Sunday for project graduation, and I believe that the PayPal site is still on the district website, so if you would like to make a donation for the project graduation, I invite you to do that, or you can write a check and bring it over to the high school, to the PTSO for any amount that you would like. Again, this is for the drug and alcohol-free celebration for graduation after the actual graduation ceremony. Some parents are working very hard to make that happen for our students, so that would be important. Also, I know there's been some discussion, and I've spoken to some parents in regards to concerns on class sizes. I can tell you that my objective, my goal, is for those students in the lower grades to try to keep those as small as possible, and I am looking at one or two possible ways of making that happen, so I don't want people to be under the impression that, you know, we're locked into a specific number, so I just wanna make that open and clear, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else for business?
Seeing that, move to close old business.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? Executive session. Any motion?
I'd like to make a motion that at eight oh five PM, that we go to executive session for purposes of conducting a student hearing, discussing negotiations, student matters, personnel hibs, grievances, the Director of Education and matters of turning sign privilege.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you oppose? We'll be going into executive session.
Action will be taken.
And action will be taken when we come back. Okay, need a motion to come out of executive session, someone?
I'd like to make a motion to come out of executive session at nine forty-seven-ish. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mrs. O'Brien?
Yeah.
Would you move the...
Sure.
Thank you.
Now I read the whole thing, correct?
I don't think so, no.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following agenda items, number five under education, with the, we had eight hibs, three substantiated, and the remaining five unsubstantiated.
Second?
Thank you.
All discussion?
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Mr. Robbins?
Yes.
Mr. Drew?
Yes.
Mr. Fooody?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepi?
Yes.
Okay, under budget and finance...
Two and three.
Did you two and three? Mr. Fooody, would you like to move those, please?[1638.48]